So there are three of us present. We do not have a quorum, for the record. There are no other officials in attendance. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the Planning and Zoning Commission for the regular meeting of February 28th. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes.
And I have a second.
Excellent. Are there any changes? Did anyone have any comments to the minutes? Okay. Plainer, Siren if you could.
Sure.
Roll call.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Palatier?
Yes.
And then, Visitors' petitions. There is no one present, so I can assume we don't have anyone who wants to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. Do we have a Village Board update?
We do.
Okay.
A little bit of a lengthy update, but I'll try to be concise. On March 21st, the Board voted to recommend approval of the ordinance to amend the hours that cannabis dispensaries can operate with the changes to the language recommended by the Commission, but with the change, the dispensaries can open at 8:00 a.m. instead of 9:00, which is currently allowed. And the Commission had not recommended that. President Pollock made several points during the discussion of that item, and I encourage those who haven't seen the meeting to watch the video. Before President Pollock spoke, Village Attorney Pickrell noted that "the consideration of text amendments doesn't have to hew quite as closely to the standards for text amendments as you would for the consideration of a variation or special use." He said, in summary, that when evaluating amendment, the overarching question should be, "Does the amendment make sense?" And that's echoed in the Village Code, which states the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation and the Village Board decision on any zoning amendment, whether a text or map amendment is a matter of legislative discretion that is not controlled by any one standard. And then President Pollock noted that he respects the Commission's role and the gravity with which they approach their responsibilities, but felt that the Commission's perspective was off-target, given that this was a text amendment and not a variation. And to that point, he mentioned that the analysis should be based on what is unique compared to other permitted uses about a cannabis dispensary that requires limiting their opening time to 9:00 a.m. He said there must be a rational nexus between the regulation and the impacts of the land use. He noted that financial considerations are not part of that analysis. He said there's no reason to believe that a cannabis dispensary will generate significantly more traffic than most other permitted uses at that location. And he stated that while it's true that the hours for carryout liquor sales are restricted, those hours are restricted by the municipal code and not the zoning ordinance. And he mentioned that the Board may want to take a look at the permitted hours for carryout liquor in the future. And so I thought I would share that feedback with you. And again, that meeting video is available if you haven't had a chance to see it. But that concludes my update.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
What did you say at the very end? That President Pollock suggested that who take a look at the?
The Board may want to take a look at the permitted hours for carryout liquor.
The Board.
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Okay. So, new business. We have the review of the application to designate House and Coach House at 169 Berry Point as landmark structures.
Yes. This item is coming before the Commission because the Village Code states that upon receiving an application for landmark designation, notice should be forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a request for review and report to the Preservation Commission on any matters affecting the subject property or the surrounding area. Staff is not aware of any matters affecting the subject property or the surrounding area for your consideration. And you don't necessarily need to vote on this, but the conclusion of your discussion may be the Commission did or did not identify any matters affecting the subject property or the surrounding area. And any other commentary that you may want to forward to the Preservation Commission. The Historical Commission did review that, and their findings and recommendation of approval were included in the agenda materials. And just a note, that this application will be heard twice by the Preservation Commission in an upcoming meeting and then a public hearing before the Village Board's final decision. So there'll be plenty of opportunity for public input on the application.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
So staff?
Go ahead.
So staff noted that there is no zoning considerations?
Staff could not identify any considerations that would impact this application.
I haven't been able to think of anything that would warrant a review of this proposal.
I'm in agreement with that.
As am I. So I take no exceptions to the application.
I'll report to the Preservation Commission. Thank you.
And so, old business. Discussion regarding impervious surface standards. So I understand you've put together quite a bit of information for us here. So if you would like to review that tonight, we can review that in, you know, in any discussion. But I think that the meat of the discussion will require a greater attendance.
Yes. In agreement, yes. And this is provided for your information. This is an ongoing discussion, so this is just to keep these things in mind and kind of food for thought. And then if you have any comments or questions, please, you know, obviously let me know and I'll incorporate this into future updates. So the focus of what I provided was focusing on the definition of impervious surface types, or the definition of impervious surface itself. Types of surfaces we may want to consider regulations for, and then an update on our impervious surface coverage map. When considering the definition, the Village's definition of impervious surface, I looked at several local jurisdictions, a couple of national jurisdictions, and then MWRD, and an agency in Ohio, just to get a kind of a broad scope of what folks define and consider as part of impervious surface. This is more fine-tuned than we need to get into at this point, but we may want to just consider, aside from specific standards for materials, the very definition of impervious surface may want us to focus on why we are regulating impervious surface and limiting the amount of its use. The fact that you cannot have stormwater percolate through the surface and into the ground, obviously, is a major issue. But there are other effects that are related to sustainability that we may want to address. So just food for thought when we go around back to perhaps revising that definition. The other thing I just kind of wanted to focus on in considering the definitions is the Village's definition only calls out a couple of surfaces that it states are impervious. And there are areas that may be considered gray areas or that are handled differently by different jurisdictions that I wanted to start us thinking about. And I focused on four areas: decks, gravel, ponds, and swimming pools and hot tubs. Regarding decks, currently the Village considers decks to be a pervious surface if they have space between the boards, which almost all decks do, and they have a pervious surface underneath, which most, almost all decks do. I've seen a couple where it's, you know, asphalt or something underneath. But basically that the water can percolate, stormwater can percolate through the slats into the ground and percolate down. Some jurisdictions regulate the size of the decks, and that may be more of a building coverage issue than impervious surface issue. Some jurisdictions do consider them impervious surface. But everything that I've, you know, recommended is most municipalities consider them to be pervious with some restrictions on the surface underneath and the board spacing as we do. And research on decks has shown, and the recommendations generally, that they are considered pervious surface. But food for thought, we may want to include some specifics in our language instead of just having our policy be that we regulate them this way, that we actually codify that. You know, you have to have a space of a certain size in between boards and a pervious surface Regarding gravel, the Village currently considers gravel to be a pervious surface without consideration of, and we don't have that many gravel drives or parking lots anymore, but we do have some. The fact that many jurisdictions will consider compacted gravel to be an impervious surface. That natural space between gravel is crushed down over time, meaning that water can't percolate through the surface. So we may want to specify that. We may also want to consider non-driveable gravel surfaces. An example might be around like a fire pit or something in a backyard, if that is installed with landscape fabric underneath it, which I think frequently they are to keep weeds from coming up, that the pores of those fabric can, you know, fill with dirt over time and it becomes maybe not impervious, but less pervious. So I want to do initial research on that and get back to you with any kind of recommendation that I can formulate.
Have you, I don't know if it's okay for me to interrupt?
Of course, please.
So on that very issue, have you, it doesn't sound like any of these other governments that you quoted from in your attachment actually did look at that. Have you heard, have you run across any village actually, or municipality, or, you know, stormwater management agency actually trying to tackle that subject of, you know, landscape fabric with pores filling over time?
That's exactly what I want to do more research on, because I intuitively feel like that should be addressed, and I'm sure someone has. I haven't found it yet, but I think more research will yield some results on that.
Okay.
Another consideration are ponds. I haven't seen that many in doing certificate of compliance reviews, but we do have a few. Interestingly, some, like Village of La Grange, for example, explicitly states ponds or other water bodies with a natural bottom are not considered impervious, so they're a pervious surface. Whereas the Village of Elmhurst and MWRD defines ponds as impervious surface, and that, I assume, because they cannot absorb and percolate the stormwater the same way that a non-covered surface does. And again, this, you know, this is up for additional consideration in the future. Not a huge issue, but something that I feel like we should address because we do have a few ponds in the Village. And then coming to swimming pools and hot tubs, most of the communities that I surveyed stated that pools and hot tubs are considered impervious surface, which may be counterintuitive. But though rainwater can enter them, homeowners frequently keep pools and hot tubs covered because the stormwater or the rainwater would impact the chemical balance, and it keeps debris out of the pool, et cetera. There was a jurisdiction, Village of Elmhurst, specified that if the pool could store a minimum of six inches of water in a rain event, which seems like a tremendous amount of water to me, that it could be considered a pervious surface. So currently, we do calculate swimming pools and hot tubs as impervious surfaces. If you recommend continuing to consider that, that that's an area we can consider, you know, continue to do research on that. It seems like generally the consensus is that they're treated as impervious surfaces. I wanted to cover, in addition to definitions, I just wanted to point out some progress that we've made on the impervious surface coverage map. For those who had a chance to look at it, or who haven't had a chance to look at it, if you go to the Village's website under the heading here under Community and select Maps, it'll open up to this webpage. And you can scroll down to impervious surface coverage map. And this is a little more interactive than what you had before, which was a few static maps that I printed with dots instead of covering the parcel, and some tables. I still have the tables, obviously. But you can see here in the key on the side, with a darker green being a higher pervious coverage, and a dark red being a less impervious coverage, specifically the limit. So each zoning district has a different limit of impervious surface coverage that's been taken into account here. So the properties that are in dark red, for example, are more than 10% over the impervious surface coverage limit in the code, whereas dark green would be more than 10% under the impervious surface coverage limit. So this gives you an idea, and in the future, I'm going to add a zoning layer to this as an overlay. But if you zoom in, you can kind of see, you know, as you may expect, some of the larger properties are green, they've got more room to work with, some of the smaller properties are red with less room to work with. But we do have a few properties that are in green that are smaller properties. And this information is being gathered from certificate of compliance inspections, where we have a survey of the property and we can calculate impervious surface coverage, or during a building permit review. So I'm trying to make this as current as possible, and there are, you know, some areas in the future that I'm going to expand on. But I'd like to, in the future, have samplings for each, like, block of the Village, so to speak. So this area here, I don't have any sampling or any data in that area, so I would add that in the future. But effectively, this kind of gives you a bird's eye view of how we're doing in terms of impervious surface coverage. And then it'll allow us to, using the spreadsheets that I sent earlier, analyze those properties that are over the coverage limit, maybe find some characteristics in common with them aside from being small, and then be able to look at individual cases of if we want to make changes to non-conforming properties, to consider those as some examples.
On this map, did you only consider residential properties?
Yes. We only have residential properties on here. We can do commercial coverage as well.
I was thinking at least the special use properties within residential districts?
Sure.
So like the pool and the schools?
Sure.
Because they're bigger properties, so, you know, like you said, many of the larger properties have more green.
Sure.
I know there's, you know, some of those properties are not meeting the impervious, so, and they're very large, so it's a bigger impact.
Sure. Yeah, and those, those commercial properties aren't, you know, subject to the same impervious surface standards because they're governed by MWRD, but it still is important to understand their impact, so.
Right. And again, not commercial in the commercial district, but special uses within residential.
Sure. And just a note, during the last time that we discussed this and I presented this information, I said there was a question about whether we could have more widespread data, that, you know, what options do we have? You know, I'm familiar with LiDAR data as an option. Basically, and I discussed this with the municipal GIS partners who provide our GIS services, and wanted to mention that they did a great job on this map. I did not make myself, they did wonderful work. But they, effectively, the limitations to using LiDAR in combination with a high-quality aerial photos would be an issue of expense and accuracy, so not quite as accurate as you might want, and I think more expensive than you'd want to pay for. So I think we've got pretty good data, especially in kind of pockets, you can kind of see different areas. So if anyone has any other suggestions, I'm open to them, but I think this is in terms of analyzing where we are, and we're in a pretty good spot with this map.
And this map will be updated with each?
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
Inspection as properties change?
Yeah, that's correct. And like I said, I, you know, I'm trying to focus on high-quality data, which takes a little bit of time. So we've got, for example, let me zoom in on Kent Road. So this area, I think I pulled out because I knew that there were issues, a history of flooding in these backyards, and kind of focused on that. But basically, what I'm trying to do is, and, you know, folks occasionally make improvements to their property without getting a building permit, so I try to get as close to the current year data as possible, and then kind of look at aerial photos and building permits to make sure that that's a pretty accurate survey, and then pull the data off of that, you know, for the older properties that aren't coming in currently. So in this area, I've just got to identify, you know, properties on Long Common and on Kent that kind of meet those criteria, and then add the data to the map. And that's all I had for you. I intend this to be, and we'll obviously revisit these topics with the benefit of having the entire Commission, or at least more of the Commission present, but, you know, I've wanted to make some progress on our impervious surface standards discussion, and I'll come back to you with additional research and an updated map the next time we discuss this.
Thank you for putting all this together.
Sure.
This is very helpful.
Yes, I agree. So are you continuing to add to the, you say you are?
I do. In fact, I have about 35 properties that aren't covered on here that I've done since the last update, so.
Okay.
That will be added.
Come in for certificates of compliance or something else, or that's just of our interest?
Compliance is building reviews, and like I said, just trying to fill in some gaps, so pulling out old files, reviewing the information, and so I'm trying to add to the map and make it more complete.
I had a couple of questions, though.
Sure.
I mean, I realize everyone's here, but one question is at the beginning of your memo, and you repeated it here. Our definition has something to do with not being allowed to absorb water, the ground, not being allowed to absorb water. And then other communities, which you seem to think was more effective, was not allowing infiltration of stormwater, and that they were different. Do you agree with that? I mean, it sounded like you were making a distinction there between we could revise our definition to instead reference infiltration as opposed to absorption.
Oh, I wasn't thinking as opposed to, I was thinking in addition to.
Okay.
So I was trying to think more, I guess I was trying to think more globally about what the impacts of impervious surfaces are. And I think, you know, our definition is very serviceable, and I'm not saying we need to necessarily include all of the impacts of impervious surface in the definition of it, but just in thinking of how we define it, certainly the examples of specific materials, I would want to widen either in the standards of the definition, but also, you know, there's a little bit of a binary, you know, pervious versus impervious. I think semi-permeable might be something to consider. And then just the idea that specifically our definition states that impervious surface do not allow for the absorption of water. You know, we may just want to be a little more, I guess, fully in describing the purpose of our standards.
Use like more technical language than absorption? Talk about infiltration, more technical language?
Oh, sort of, maybe more technical, but I think more, what I was trying to think is the bigger picture, you know?
Okay.
To try to describe it. But that may be unnecessary, I may be overshooting the purpose of it, but that was just a thought that I had when looking at other definitions.
There, I mean, in relationship to that, one thing I don't understand, and you don't have to answer, but when they reference infiltration of stormwater, it also, it's not just stormwater. I mean, I don't know, unless stormwater is identified as rainwater, is, does rainwater, or when I think of stormwater, I often think of things that are like flowing over the ground as opposed to rainwater coming down from the ground, coming down from the sky, you know, and hitting the ground. Does that make sense?
I think, I think stormwater is meant to mean rainwater.
Okay.
Yeah. I think my understanding is that's synonymous with what you anticipate during a rainy day, that's all stormwater.
That's called stormwater, okay. Maybe we'd need to add a definition in our definitions, just to specify that, because
Sure.
People think of rain, you know, rainwater, not storm, I think of stormwater as something that's handled by pipes and things like that.
Oh, sure.
You know what I mean? Not sheet flow, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
But one thing I noticed with, I don't know how much you remember these different definitions, but MWRD, you had their definition in there, and in the table, and it sounded very much like they had sort of like a yes/no test, like it either is pervious or it's not pervious. And that seemed odd to me, that they would say it in that way. Let's see. It said, "impervious area, a surface that does not readily allow for the infiltration of stormwater runoff into the ground." And then it says, "Volume control practices, green infrastructure, other areas which include but are not limited to non-compact and gravel, permeable pavement, et cetera, shall not be considered impervious." So it's like all those which are actually meant to absorb lots of water are just, okay, well, they're not impervious.
Sure.
And that could get into a, you know, a subtlety that maybe we would want to, like if people have rain gardens, or people have, you know, retention, detention ponds or things like that, maybe they get extra credit. I don't know.
I think that'd be desirable, and I think defining, I think we don't have a separate definitions for impervious purpose, semi-permeable, and more of those specific standards, and I think that's what I was trying to get at, is I'd like to fully describe the options and the methods.
I mean, I think that's great, yes, that would be wonderful. And I'm just saying, I think a lot of the definitions, although you got them, there, some of them are useful, and some of them have useful wording, but others still seem to ask, leave a lot of things open.
Sure.
But I agree with you, like, say, I think that rather than just a policy of the, you know, Village staff that could change or not be applied or whatever, as for decks or pools or whatever, more of those things should be spelled out in the zoning ordinance itself, so that it's a little bit more structured as far as how the definition is applied.
Sure.
And then another thing I was interested in was any discussion of how these things are actually tested. There's some references, like we have a reference coefficient of permeability, one of these villages referenced the drop test.
Mm-hmm.
Oak Park allows only a 20% credit for pervious pavers if they're properly installed. I mean, there's a lot of things about, and what you were mentioning before about landscape fabric, there's a lot of stuff about on the ground, how is this determination actually made? Is there going to be staff resources going out there and doing a drop test or an infiltration test compared to the rest of the lot? You know? Issues with implementation.
That's what, exactly what I had in mind, is I've got a lot of research on, you know, different surfaces, and, you know, I think that, and I've seen that 20% figure before. I'm not sure if that's the best figure, but it's definitely something that municipalities use. But that's, to your point, I completely agree. I think there is, you know, writing the code, and then there's practically speaking, you know, having local contractors, you know, submit permits that accurately affect what they're installing, making sure that it's installed according to what they, you know, the manufacturer's recommendation or our specifications in the code. And then, you know, maintenance is another concern that I have.
Right.
You know, and I'm not sure, because that can, you know, you can install something and it can become, the pores can become, you know, filled with dirt, and then it, you know, loses its semi-permeable nature.
Right, exactly. And I don't know how our Village could possibly vet all of that and, you know, re-inspect years later your permeable. I mean, I think that it should be done at one level, but I think it's not going to probably be practical to do that, so.
Sure, we'll have to see what our options are, and however folks handle that.
So not being able to do follow-up inspections could work into how much credit we give. Maybe that's why Oak Park only gives a 20% credit, because they assume that over time these things are not going to be as effective. But, yeah, okay. Those are all, there's still a lot more to look into, but yes, I support adding more specifics into the definition.
Sure.
Commissioner Brown?
I think it's a, it's more than a great start.
Okay. Agreed. I love, the map is really handy. Just some observations. I think it is important to define what the purpose is, because I think it helps us, if someone comes in for a variation, it helps us to kind of justify, you know, our whatever approval or disapproval. But I think it is helpful to have the purpose of it included in the definition.
Okay.
Our definition is good, although it uses impervious in the definition, which is somewhat problematic.
Sure.
And it also uses the coefficient of permeability, which is a thing, but it definitely needs to be defined, and also, as you said, how do you, how do you confirm that that's, that it is, you know, whatever is being claimed. I would be in favor of decks, you know, including it as impervious, but with requirements, you know, specific requirements, including the separation of the slats, I guess they're called. And also having ponds and pools considered impervious seems reasonable. One thing with regard to the 20% credit, or some kind of credit for pervious pavements, is my biggest concern with that is that some, if you don't have only a partial credit, if they get 100% credit, it could lead to a 100% paved lot.
Right.
So I feel like we would have to, if we give full credit for pervious pavements, we would also have to couple it with some kind of a, some minimum amount of area needs to be planted materials, say. And then with regard to rain gardens offering a credit, I think it's a good idea, and it makes sense from the standpoint of what our purpose is, but it also could lead to, you know, if someone increases their impervious because of the credit of their rain garden, then that has to be maintained, and then, you know, as title changes and ownership changes, that, it seems like that could be problematic.
I agree with the comment about rain gardens. I wasn't saying it's necessarily supporting that, getting extra credit, I just think it's one of those issues.
Yeah, I agree.
And I know in the past we've had issues with giving credits for permeable pavers, and that's how, you know, our generosity on that credit has really helped out the applicant. So, yes, if we're going to ratchet that down or not, you know, we do have to be clear and have very clear rules.
Yeah. And it's something I was concerned about when we did give them full credit, you know what I mean? That was something that was in the back of my mind.
But that's exactly why this will be helpful, because then we'll have some evidence, we'll have some data, you know, to support our decisions, I'm guessing. But one other thing I was concerned about, some of these, the language from the other villages mentions compacted soil, and I do think that's an issue, is compacted soil, especially if we have a new construction, and there might be some benefit to looking at, or else just simply drawing a line around a new structure and say, we're going to assume that this much, you know, this far out from the structure is compacted at this level. Maybe not 100% impervious, but maybe at some percentage. And I've seen that, I'm sure everyone has seen that with their own eyes, where, you know, a new development goes in and all of a sudden, all the water's running off, you know, somewhere else. And it's not just because of the building that's there, it's because there's been so much ground disruption and so much compaction of the soil. I suppose you could even, you know, survey some of the few new buildings in town, you know, neighbors who have, if they have seen that themselves, you know, adjacent neighbors have had an impact from, you know, the new house going in. I'm guessing, yes. And I don't know that it's necessarily an easy fix, because you have to compact the soil when you're doing all of this work, but it should be taken into account of, I think. I don't have anything else for you tonight.
I have nothing else? The next meeting is April?
Should be April 24th.
April 24th, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
I'll second. Do I have a second?
Oh, I second.
Thank you.
I thought you said that you would second it.
I can't second my own motion.
So are we adjourned?
Yes.
We're adjourned.
We have to vote on the?
Oh, we don't need to, no.
Okay.
Commissioner Hennigan's notes are telling me that we do not need a rule.
Hey, you're the boss.
We are adjourned.